Way into.
I know Denise is, yeah, I know Denise is planning to attend. Like I said, we oftentimes. Um, I'm gonna call the Transportation Commission meeting for March sixth, three twenty-three ordered. Um, Jesse or Stefan, who's, uh, Jesse, are you here? Do you want to read the instructions for us, please? Jesse, are you there?
Yep, I'm here.
All right, thank you.
Welcome to our virtual transportation meeting. We're gonna cover a few basic guidance before beginning. If you lose connection at any point during the meeting, you can reconnect by clicking the link or calling the number in your original e- email. To members and city staff, members of you are able, please activate your video and keep it on for the duration of the meeting. Staff, if you are able, please activate your video when you are speaking. Use the raise hand feature when you'd like to be recognized to speak. Staff, click raise hand when you are asked a question. The chair will do their best to call on committee members in the order in which their hands are raised. Lowering your hand will take you out of the queue. Members of the public who have registered to speak, the name you entered in Zoom must match the name you entered in registration. You will remain muted until called upon. The clerk will tell you when your time is up. After speaking, a member of the body may ask you a question. If you need to share documentation with the board, please send it to the email listed in today's agenda. Chair's floor is yours.
Thank you, Jesse. Um, Aiden, if you want to go ahead and call the TC role, I just got an email from Denise saying that she's in the Zoom update and she should be here shortly, so. Maybe just watch for her.
All right, sounds good. Sorry, Chris McAho.
Here.
Ann Kovitch.
Here.
Robbie Weber. Bridget Brown.
Here.
Harold Kleems.
Here.
Denise Just. Don't see quite yet. Barbara Harrington McKinney. But believe is also having, uh, issues logging on currently, but should be here. And then. Uh, Charles Miazzi. Patricia Bennett. Bill Bremer and Darren Wasnewski are all excused tonight.
Okay, thanks, Aiden. Tom, go ahead.
All right, thank you, Chair Kovitch. Uh, I'll call the Transportation Policy and Planning Board to order for the meeting of Monday, March sixth, twenty twenty-three. If the public please call the roll.
I think you're muted, Sharon.
There we go. Sorry. Bodri Lankalan.
Here.
Bosses are the Anna Santana.
Here, I hope you guys can hear me.
Barbara Harrington McKinney.
Here.
Carolyn McAndrews.
Here.
Christopher McAhill.
Here.
Eric Paulson. He will be late due to Finance Committee. Grant Foster.
Here.
Keith Furman. He will also be late due to Finance Committee. Nikki Vandermeulen. Randy Urdell. Thomas Wilson.
Here. Okay, thank you, Sharon. Um. We already did our virtual meeting statement with TC, so we don't have to do that again. Welcome to the joint meeting of the Transportation Policy and Planning Board and Transportation Commission. Um, do we have any, uh, public, uh, registrations for public comment for items not on the agenda? Are there any disclosures, communications, or recusals from members of either body? Please use the hand raise feature. Seeing none, um, we'll get into our first agenda item. Sorry, just got some feedback there. Agenda, um, item number two, Legisstar six, six, three, eight, two, update on action items from prior joint meetings. Uh, Anne, go ahead.
Uh, thanks, Tom. Uh, there's a written summary of the updates in Legisstar, um, and I'm happy to say we've made significant progress on our action items from, uh, from the prior meeting. A lot of the policy initiatives that we were working on have been accomplished. Um, so any questions? I wrote it all down for everybody. So any, anybody have any questions for me? Okay, I told you I'd keep it brief, Tom, so there you go.
All right, thank you, Anne. Thank you for, for doing that. All right, our next item is Legisstar. Okay, next item is Legisstar seven, five, nine, zero, one, repealing section three, three point five five and three, three point five six, and recreating section three, three point five six of the Madison General Ordinance is to create a Transportation Commission, and amending section three point one four and sixteen point zero one to remove references to the Transportation Policy and Planning Board. Alder Foster, go ahead, please.
Thanks, Chair. Um, I'm able to speak on the, uh, on the item, give us, give a summary to, um, kick things off. So, um, hopefully, as everyone's aware, the what's in front of us is a proposal to, uh, essentially consolidate the Transportation Commission and the Transportation Policy and Planning Board into one, um, transportation body that would also be called the Transportation Commission. Um, this is a proposal that, um, I, I think has been in the works a little bit, um, probably for a, a, a year or more. Um, it was discussed at a previous joint meeting and additional work was done with staff, um, around some of the details and the design of it. Uh, and it's something that I, I strongly support. I think it's in the best interest of the city. I think it will, um, um, while challenging, I think it will result in, um, really high quality work and, uh, kind of effective and eff- and efficient governance. So I'm excited to, um, hear from folks today, um, have good discussion debates on any of the, the points, um, consider, um, potential amendments to the draft that's in front of us. And, um, hopefully there's a, uh, recommendation from the body that will go to the Common Council, um, who's meeting tomorrow to, uh, to, uh, take action on it. So I think I'll leave it there for the time being, and, um, maybe open up to, uh, I'll turn back over to the chair. Thanks.
Thank you, Alder Foster. Um, I guess, are there questions for Alder Foster? Um, Alder Harrington McKinney, go ahead, please.
Thank you very much. Um, um, whereas I, um, uh, uh, agree long term that, uh, this has been discussed and, um, consolidating the boards might be, uh, a, a great idea in terms of the expediency of the staff and those participants who are on both committees. But my question is, is that, um, I've not been a true part of the conversations about, and I had reached out, I'm sorry, and I had reached out to you to kind of bring me up to date, um, but, um, it seems that we are pushing this through for, um, the consideration of the Common Council for tomorrow. And I am, um, asking someone, I'm going to put it out there, is, is that why is this not placed on file and why does this need to be resonated, um, at this meeting, especially since we will be having a new, uh, council that'll be coming in and tackling with this in, uh, April.
Alder Foster, you can go ahead and, um, reply.
Sure, thanks, um, Chair. And yeah, I, I would say the primary, um, rationale for the timing is that, um, um, I, I believe it's actually the, the best time to make such a significant transition is, um, at the end of the, the, uh, an alder manic term, um, and beginning of the next one. So at a minimum, all of the alder appointees to both of these bodies or any potential alder appointees to the future body will, um, happen and take effect, um, at the, the changeover between the two terms in April. Uh, so I think it's the least disruptive and the, the sort of most obvious time to implement, um, such change. So that's the rationale for, uh, considering it ahead of the, uh, change to a new council. Um, I also believe that all of the current membership has a lot of experience under the current arrangement or in a, the, uh, very good position to make a recommendation around the future organization of the bodies.
Okay, just a, a follow-up question. Um, and, uh, it, it is a very significant change, um, and I see that and I'm going through reading the process, um, but also, um, I am kind of, um, hesitant in having this body making the decision of, of that what will be guiding the, the new alders who will be coming on board, especially e- even myself, you know, may or may not be coming back, but, uh, specifically there are alders who are making these decisions that will not be come back, coming back. And I would be more comfortable in doing a substitute and placing this on file to bring back to, uh, the body after the, um, uh, seating of the new council. And when it's appropriate, that, that's the, uh, um, uh, motion I'm going to make.
Okay, thank you, Alder Harrington McKinney. Um. Uh, Bodri, you're up next. Go ahead, please.
Um, I just, uh, have some basic questions and, uh, apologize if I don't know the process here. Um. We have actually merged, right? And the historically, there were like six or so transportation boards, and then we consolidated all of them into these two, correct?
Hmm.
So there was a process followed at that time. Um, are we following the same process or similar process? The first question numbered, um, I feel like if policies making on your own bodies, I always felt like that is a conflict of interest. I don't know. I thought there was some other bu- uh, bodies actually make decisions on behalf of these board, not board making on decisions on their own thing. So I don't know if that is how it was done in the past too, so I don't know. The third one is, when we had meetings, TPBB just alone, we were going like two hours, three hours, four hours into this meetings at one time because there were so many items to cover. And worried, uh, combining these two would be able to cover that many topics with both of them. Um, so those are my basic questions there. The number one was the, who's actually has the authority to, to do this one? Is this boards can actually make policies on themselves? Is that a conflict of interest or?
Alder Foster, did you want to take that one or?
Yeah, I can.
Have more experience with that, the history of it particular than I do.
Yeah, I'd be happy to, to try and answer. So, um, in terms of the sort of authority and process, um, it's the authority of the Common Council to make a decision or in regards to any committees, um, boards, et cetera. There are some that are required by the state, but neither of the Transportation Commission or the Transportation Policy and Planning Board are required. So it's, it's truly in the authority of the, um, Common Council. The, it was introduced at the Common Council and it was referred to the Transportation Commission and the Transportation Policy Planning Board, these two bodies, or a recommendation. So our role is to provide, um, a recommendation to the Common Council, um, and then the Common Council will debate it and make a decision, um, about any action that would be taken. Um, and in terms of process, um, in the, I think it was about four years ago, it was called the Transportation Ordinance, um, Review Committee. And it, it was an ad hoc committee that was formed, um, with alders and some city staff that, uh, came, that brought about the recommendations, um, for the new bodies as well as some major changes to the Department of Transportation itself, including hiring a, a director, et cetera. So this is, uh, and, and during that, um, process, I guess I should say there was discussion at that time um, in consideration of moving sort of even further to having, um, only one body instead of two. And at the time, the recommendation was to have the two that, that exist today. So this is a different process in that there was no ad hoc committee formed and it's, um, uh, simply an ordinance change that's under, that was proposed and that's under review right now.
But is that means that, um, um, we are, is, is the continuation of that process? Or we, do we need to actually have another process start to complete this thing or just?
Yeah, there's no, I think at the time it was, there was just a, um, there was a desire to have a sort of more comprehensive, um, process because of the number of committees involved, et cetera. So it was the Common Council at that time estab- established an ad hoc committee and no such committee is required to be established and none has been re, um, established for this purpose, for this, um, proposal.
So more the last one about the workload for this, if we combine this workload is gonna be like, used to be two hours each or sometimes goes three, four hours. If you combine, it's gonna be four hours, six hours for each, uh, one, one team?
Y- yeah, I can respond to that. And I think others, you know, will probably have opinions and, um, will share those as well. So I think there certainly in combining the work that's been performed by the two bodies, there's some, um, potential to have a, a net increase in the overall work for the one body. Uh, on the other hand, in my experience, and I, I served as the joint member for two years, um, of the last four, in my experience, uh, and especially most recently with the significant policy, um, proposals that have gone through the, the committees, um, even for those items where the Transportation Policy and Planning Board is lead and is the sort of primary, um, um, guidance and oversight body for the proposal and the policy development. Um, those, uh, presentations and information is typically, um, also coming to the Transportation Commission. So it's my belief that there's a lot of, uh, uh, duplication of discussions and review that's happening today that would not happen if there were only one body. So I believe there's a fair amount of um, efficiencies in, um, in reductions in that, um, as well as in the current proposal, there are recommendations to more clearly, um, separate, um, commit, commission, excuse me, commission work from, um, staff work to be able to address and ensure that the workload doesn't get too high.
Thank you, Alder. Really helpful. Yeah, I was, I was that impression too. There's two. One is policy and the other is implementation. So that's what I was wondering because there are two different topics to there, right? So, um, is, and the workload is this big one. And as you mentioned, there was the process that they followed. Looks like we are not doing that one again here now. So those are the three things I have concerns on. So, thank you.
Uh, thank you, Bodri. Um, Harold, looks like you're up next. Go ahead, please.
Yeah, thank you. Um, yeah, I think a couple of responses to topics that have come up. Uh, maybe I'll start with the workload. So I, as Alder Foster said, we had this discussion previously. And at that point, I was also like, oh, wow. Is this manageable in terms of the workload? But I think I've come around in the year since then to be like, yeah, this is feasible because, I mean, I'm not one of the crossover members, but I pretty much always either watch the TPBB meeting, the recording of, or sometimes I'm able to attend. And based on that experience, really, there is duplication. And there is areas that are, yeah, you can call them policy or you can call them implementation, or there's somewhere in between there, which then requires first TPBB to come to a point where then we have to rehash all of it at PC. And so I think with regard to workload, I think it's going to be feasible. Um, will there be some meetings that will be longer? Possibly. Will there probably be more work for the chair to like develop work plans and agenda that make that workload manageable? Yeah, probably, but I think it's definitely doable. Um, one question I had based on the staff comments, uh, with regard to the crossover membership whereby there needs to be a member from Plan Commission, from Sustainable Madison, and a couple other bodies. Um, I think the reasoning behind that makes a lot of sense to me, but the staff concerns seem to have been about the feasibility. Where like, yeah, there might be lots of meeting conflicts which might make that difficult. So I'm just curious what the response to that comment was to make that possibly recommended rather than mandated.
You can go ahead, Alder Foster, if you want to reply in any way.
Thank, thank you. Um, yeah, I, I, I guess number one, um, I, I think it, to me, it feels really critical that there's at least a crossover between, uh, Plan Commission and, and Board of Public Works, those two really feel like, um, really critical and in, and integral. I think the, um, I, I do currently serve on the, um, Sustainable Madison Committee, and I think they're, um, given the realities of, of where we're at, the work that's been done around building energy efficiencies and some of the other topics, it seems clear to me that, uh, transportation is really the, the biggest opportunity in terms of future sustainability work. Um, and I think it's an area where there is, there's good understanding of that, but it's also easy for the sort of transportation to not be considered in the sustainability lens. So I actually feel like there's a lot of importance and value there. Um, it's one where I feel like I could be flexible, that it could be a recommended and, and not required. Um, but I, you know, there is a large membership on the, the SMC and there are several alder appointments as well. So I think in all of these, my, my gut is that these, the crossover positions would be alder appointments, um, which typically today every alder um, is assigned to serve on, um, several, several bodies. And so I think the crossover assignments would be um, relatively easy to accomplish through alder appointments, um, and so would avoid some of the issues of a resident being asked to, uh, to do so much. Um, the last one is the Madison Area MPO. Um, that one also, I think it's, might even have four uh, Madison alder appointments. It's either three or four. It's a lot. Um, and I, and again, I feel like it's very, um, it makes a lot of sense to have a crossover between, um, that, um, urban area transportation body and, um, and a, a Transportation Commission. So I guess I would say in, in all, I think at least three of those four seem pretty critical to me, um, and worthwhile, and I think easy to do. Um, I'd be open to moving the, the Sustainable Madison Committee, um, appointment to a strongly recommended instead of a required.
Thank you. That's helpful. And may I ask one more question or one more observation?
Yeah, go, go ahead.
So, uh, one member of the new body would be the regional representative, which currently is only a requirement for TPBB. So I think I just want to make the observation that that increases the influence of that um, appointment on a lot of things that are happening in the city and that probably aren't really, I mean, do we need the regional representative to chime in on road cross-sections? I mean, I think on TPBB that made a lot of sense because it's from a municipality that contracts with Metro for service. And so there is a regional aspect to that. But I wonder, given that there are already MPO appointment, like there's the crossover requirement for MPO members in there, I wonder what we do about the regional representative as a required member of the new Transportation Commission.
Yeah, I can, uh, respond briefly there as well. I, um, I don't feel strongly on this one. Um, I did not make a recommendation to remove that position, so did recommend carrying it over. Um, I know that the initial impetus for that position was, as you mentioned, largely around transit, um, and really, um, trying to ensure that we had representation from the kind of metro service area in addition to just the City of Madison. Um, I, I think it's, I think the points are well taken about, um, allowing that for, for the broader Transportation Commission, um, duties. We do allow, uh, non-city residents on other boards, committees, and commissions, but it requires, uh, an extra majority of the council to, uh, to confirm those appointments. So I guess in this one, I'm also open if, um, to hear from others and, um, would consider it. I'd like to also hear from staff if they have any concerns about um, either, either removing that requirement or li- limiting, um, participation anyway, uh, from that m- from that, uh, member.
Thank you.
All right, uh, thank you. Uh, Chris McAhill, you're up next. Go ahead, please.
Thanks. Um, I didn't actually have any questions, but it felt like we were kind of mixing questions and comments. Is that right? And I saw, uh, Chair, Chair Kovitch kept falling back in the queue. Did, did you want to jump in first?
I'm doing that. Chris, I'm doing that because our special rules say I can participate, but only after everybody else has. So I'm just pushing myself down so everybody else gets to talk first.
Okay. All right, thanks. Um, so yeah, I just wanted to offer my thoughts. Um. First is just on the timing and the procedure of this. Um, I, I think probably now is a good time to be at least making a recommendation on this. Whether council decides to act is not really up to us, but, um, my experience has been that, um, it takes a while for, for, um, common council members to understand how the TC and TPBB even work anyway. And, you know, often when, um, you know, when, uh, bus network redesign and BRT went to council, there was a lot of confusion about how much input there had been and things like that. So I think there's some benefit to making a recommendation to a council that has been through at least some of that process and is, is a little bit familiar with how things currently work rather than waiting for folks to have to get up to speed again. Um, again, all we can do is make a recommendation, but I would urge us to at least make a re- recommendation tonight. Um, so, um, uh, like Harold, when this came up a few years back, I couldn't imagine how the, the workload that this would create. Uh, it seemed like a massive workload that this would create by combining the two. Um, and I've heard that concern already. Um, but since that initial conversation, I've been sort of paying attention to where time, how time is spent and where there might be efficiencies. And I, I also think that, um, that there, there, there are a lot of opportunities to, to create efficiencies here. Um, I think some of the pros of making this move or the reasons to do that, um, as we've heard, there, there is a lot of wasted time duplicating reports and stuff, and that's especially on behalf of staff. Um, I've seen staff give the same conversation um, uh, in multiple meetings, um, many times. Oh, and just in case folks don't recall, I'm the joint member of both, so I've been straddling the two this whole time. Um, and, uh, I, I think honestly TPBB meetings generally have been shorter. Um, and so a lot of what happens at TPB is reports, um, that we, that have also been seen at TC, so definitely some efficiencies that could be gained there. Um, another, uh, benefit of doing this is I, I, it's become pretty clear to me that the current structure isn't really working that well. Um, it's sort of been, the impetus has been on me as the joint member to some extent to report back and forth. Um, and I do that to the extent that I can, but, you know, there's only so much I can capture understandably, and that's, you know, why we, we have these meetings to begin with is just to get very familiar with certain topics. Um. I think that became kind of clear through things like the bus network redesign, you know, where, um, TPBB spent a lot, a long time thinking about the bus network redesign, um, and then at the end handed it off to TC for implementation. Um, and some of that sort of felt kind of strange that, you know, there were experts in, in tran- in, in the bus network on TC, um, that weren't really weighing in all along the way. So, um, another, uh, another reason this might make sense is the current structure does at times feel confusing to the public. Um, I, I think there's a lot of folks who don't know, um, how to track when something is coming up, you know, which agenda to be looking for, who to be going to. Um, so this would provide a lot of clarity on that. Um, the cons, I think we've heard this, potentially longer meetings, um, and, you know, Um, and you know, uh, fewer eyes on 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 things between the two. The two bodies, there are a lot of folks seeing stuff, so that number would be down. Um, and potentially there would be longer meetings. Um, I I know there's been concern about if if meetings are generally longer, will that be even harder to get, you know, a diverse mix of folks serving, um, those who can't commit that amount of time or have trouble in the evenings? Um, but I do wonder um if there, some of the the benefits of the com- the combination are that, um, I believe it would be a larger body. I think it would be. Um, so in which case, it it would be easier to meet quorum more often. And so if honestly, if folks served and and couldn't make it to every commitment, that would be okay as long as we're tracking, you know, attendance and who's showing up regularly. Um, so you know, the onus wouldn't be on every member to show up um all the time. Um, so that might be a little bit of flexibility there. Um, I think we've talked about some of the other, um, oh, there's also um the opportunity for some subcommittees to handle things that are handled now. Um, at Transportation Commission spends a lot of time diving into the details of road design. And I I I don't think everybody needs to be doing that all the time, so I think there are other structures for doing that. Um, maybe models like uh currently um taxi license appeals go to a smaller group of the Transportation Commission, um, and and Chair Kovach could speak a little bit about that. But I think there's structures like that that could make it, that not everything had to come to the full body. Um, so that's kind of uh where I'm at right now. So happy to hear what other people are thinking. Thanks.
Thank you, Chris. Um, next up is Denise Jess. Uh, go ahead.
Thanks, Chair. Um, thanks, everybody, for putting the newest proposal together. I really appreciate it. Um, I want to tap into Chris's comment about um the importance of diversity on the body. And um, uh, and I think I have a question related to that. Um, with the body combining, um, and I don't see it in the document, how um is there going to be attention put into creating a really diverse um, um entity? I think that's one of the the things that is both good about TC and also I will name as the sole person on TC with, um, you know, uh, uh, with a disability or uh the person who is out with a disability. It can be very burdensome to need to be representing the entire disability community and hoping that you always get it right. And it's been exciting to see my fellow TC members become even stronger um disability advocates and also looking at the intersectionality of disability with poverty and and race. So, um, you know, the common combining or creating a new body, I really want to be assured that we are being incredibly mindful about how we construct that membership so that we are being incredibly um attentive to diversity, equity and inclusion of the folks in this community who are non-drivers or who are vulnerable users or, you know, so and and trying to make sure that we don't have kind of single representation from one group. And so maybe combining the bodies allows for that that more concentration. But I I just don't see it addressed in the plan, how we're going to assure that we are building a robust membership that represents the diversity of um of the city. So that that's my one still lingering um question.
Thank you, Denise. Alder Foster, did you want to reply?
Yeah, thanks, Chair. Um, and thanks for the great question, Denise. So um, in the um, this was a, this was a, an element that that um the Transportation Ordinance Review Committee uh spent a fair amount of time on in this um in the previous review that led to the two bodies. And the current ordinance language for the TC and the TPPB reflect the outcomes of that discussion, which um has a fair number of very specific requirements um as to the membership um positions. Um, in this draft, uh, I s- I essentially brought all of those requirements into the new body um with the exception of previously there was a a requirement for one member to be, I think it's like familiar with parking, use of the parking system or something like that. I don't have the exact words in front of me. Um, but that was one that um myself and others that were reviewing it felt like perhaps wasn't required to call out specifically. Um, so that is not in the in the proposal in front of us. Um, but essentially all the other requirements, including um a person um with um uh, I can remember it's actually having a disability or a a user that's familiar with issues facing persons with disability, I think is the actual terminology. Um, same thing around um uh sort of equity. Um, and there's also callouts for um people that use the transit as a primary source of transportation, uh, someone who uses um walking and biking as a primary form of transportation. So all of, all of those requirements have essentially been carried um from the existing ordinances into the new one. Um, at the end of the, this uh, any of the bodies could recommend additional uh requirements. I think the the balancing act, of course, is the more specific requirements you put, the more challenging it can become to fill, fill the seats. Um, so at the end of the day, the appointments are the responsibility of the mayor. And I know at least this mayor has put a lot of attention into um trying to be very thoughtful about appointments to to make sure that they're representing the community, but that would affect it, essentially go unchanged with this um ordinance proposal.
Hey, sounds like that answered your question, Denise. Thank you, Alder Foster. Good. I give the thumbs up there. All right, um, next up, uh Baltazar Dianusantana. Um, go ahead, please.
Thank you very much. Uh, you know, I think they have, as 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 I listen and as 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 we are talking about these these changes, I think I'm still have a, you know, I think my my main concern, just like with Denise, you know, are we, is this gonna actually gonna happen in reality? Uh, you know, I think one of my, eh, we, I think what's gonna, if we really wanna build this, uh, then maybe that new group will have to be larger than what we have right right now. One thing that I was always satisfied with, eh, you know, having these two groups is the fact that there were individuals in some of those groups that have, you know, lived experience and that have direct connection with with the community that is being affected. So I think I just, I just, and the thanks, eh, Alder Foster for for sharing that information. I think I just, I just put it back as eh, you know, we we need to, we need to make sure that whatever happens that that we bring those priorities eh as part of this conversation. Eh, I don't know what's gonna happen with the new people who are gonna be elected, you know, I don't know which elders are gonna be here and and which are not. So that's also part of my 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 concern as well. You know, are we, I think what we have right now eh with these two groups kind of reflects, in a way, you know, eh, our city of Madison. So my biggest concern is once we consolidate. Eh, I, my 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 concern is that we're gonna be losing that eh, but you know, just agreeing with what Denise mentioned. You know, I eh, and 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 I hopefully eh whoever, you know, whatever happens eh in the future, that will really put a lot of attention in into this. Eh, and I know we have this written as a document and that's important, but I also know that it's very, very hard to to make those things a reality when it comes to bringing folks from diverse communities.
Thank you, Baltazar. Um, let's see, it's like, Anne, you're up next. Go ahead, please.
Thanks, Tom. Um, I do think this is the right time uh to make this move. Uh, I think um two years ago, uh, when we talked about this at a last, our last joint meeting, I was concerned about the workload and that it wouldn't be manageable by one body. But we have made so much progress moving some major transportation policy initiatives from the um planning stage through to the implementation stage um that I think now is the time for us to consider it. Um, and I agree with other comments that this council knows what TC does and what TPPB does. And it's better to do it now with people who are familiar with the two bodies. Uh, because I think this council has seen the movement, has seen complete green streets, transportation demand management, transit network redesign, BRT. So many things have moved to the implementation stage that I think it's manageable. Um, and I think that with, um, I think we've tried to appropriately delegate authority and responsibility to staff. I think continuing down that path and continuing down the path of increased efficiency is um another way that we can make the workload manageable. Use of consent agendas has helped TC dramatically, eliminating information-only presentations. Um, you know, requiring staff to distribute things far enough ahead of time where we read it and we don't have to repeat things at meetings. We've tried really hard to be more efficient. Certain times where we have a lot of public testimony, the meetings go on longer and and we understand that. Uh, but I think that there there is some duplication and some ways that we can combine them. And I think the the major advantage that I see in combining them is that uh people who make decisions with regard to implementation have a lot of hands-on experience that is helpful when you're looking at reframing or forming policy decisions. And I think that's that's really helpful. And expanding the the body from nine members and two alternates to eleven members and two alternates does give us a little bit more uh to work with. So I do support it. I think um, one of the things that I wanted to to talk about a little bit was the balance of residents and elected officials. Um, when you look at the um Transportation Commission has um seventy-eight percent is residents and the Policy Board is fifty-six percent. On a combined basis, sixty-seven percent um are residents. And in the new proposal, that drops down to fifty-five percent. Um, and there'd be two ways. Interesting, I hadn't thought about it, but um if the regional representative position was eliminated and that was given to a resident, that would bounce the percentage back up to sixty-four percent residents and you'd have that balance that I think is is helpful to getting some of uh what Denise was talking about, what Baltazar was talking about uh relative to representation in the city. So interesting, two different ways that you could go about it. One, reducing one of the alder positions or potentially eliminating the regional uh representative position. Um, and just one last thing that had occurred to me was having a regional representative is really helpful in certain regards. Uh, but an interesting observation and no disrespect at all intended toward any regional representative, but should a regional representative be a chair or a vice chair of such an important combined transportation uh body for the city of Madison? So it's it's just something interesting for us to think about, uh, because this combined body is uh much more powerful with both policy and implementation. So I'm curious what folks um think about that. And, you know, should there be one more resident and one less elected official um with regard to that? So, thanks.
Um, I just got a message from Chair Wilson. He had to step away for one minute so I can um chair in his absence. Uh, Alder Harrington-McKinney?
Uh, thank you, uh, Chair. Um, this has been, for me, a very fruitful conversation. And from where I sit, it uh it just um um demonstrate that there are still considerations to be made. And let me just go through my my checklist. Um, I I heard, you know, um, the the need to make sure, you know, what is policy and what is implementation. Um, absolutely, uh, the identification of the duplications is critically important so that there is not duplications with both bodies. The efficiencies, absolutely. The efficiencies, I heard. The workload that came into the conversation, um, um institutional knowledge came into the conversation. Expertise came into the con- uh conversation. There is a great complexity of just and and understanding, grasping this. And what really stood out for me, as I sit in this space, is the diversity of representation. Um, and when I say diversity of representation, I'm talking about, um, you you know, various users of transportation. And so um for for me, what would work for me, and and many of you have sat on this body much longer than I have, but what I'm looking at is is that when I did some of the other research, um, there was an ad hoc committee. And I know that, uh, because I sat on one of those those transportation-related committees that we could never meet because we could never get quorum. And so when the discussion was made to form the Transportation Commission into two, two bodies, uh, my committee got um 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 resolved, got um included in that. But what I'm, what I am asking in terms of the consideration is is that um, an ad hoc committee was formed in order to look at the various six bodies and to form it into two. With these discussions, with these things outlined for me, um, w- w- why wasn't or isn't or has there been an ad hoc committee to review those bullet points that we've discussed in tonight to make sure that we're, we are making a solid repen- repis- um, a recommendation to the council? And so, so that's what my confusion is, is that, um, uh, where was the discussion about or from an ad hoc committee to to really look at how we can piece these together and to uh really recommend a strong recommendation to the council? That's my observation. I'm done.
Thanks, Alder Harrington-McKinney. I'm not sure if there was a question with that. Did you want to respond, Alder Foster? Or, okay. Um, all right, then, uh, looks like Alder Furman's up next. Go with Alder Furman.
Thank you. I apologize. I missed a part of this discussion, but I've heard a bunch of feedback. Um, I was um uh very much against the combination of these two groups when this was discussed here previously. Um, and I um through through those discussions that evening, um, through the feedback that happened that evening and all the work that's happened between now and this new proposal, um, I'm a fan. Um, I find that um the two groups um really are, it's a struggle to figure out what goes where. Um, I went through, um, I don't know if you guys remember the Leekman Dota Sidewalk project. Um, but everybody remembers that uh on TC certainly. And it really was a great example of how important it is to be involved in implementation, to understand policy. Um, and I really did appreciate, um, you know, what controversial topic, watching how TC handled that and really recognizing that I think for Transportation Policy Planning Board, uh, which I am a member of, we are very removed from the implementation. And I think the the combination of the the two um will bring about better outcomes and better results. I mean, you see a lot of TC members having to come to Transportation Policy Planning Board to understand, you know, what the policy uh uh perspectives uh or proposals are and give their feedback. I I think having the two committees is is just not working right. I was very concerned about the workload, um, and I think um this proposal um and working with staff really does um tackle those concerns um and really gives a framework for that to continue to be revisited. Um, I've heard some concern tonight about creating an ad hoc committee to give feedback on this proposal. Um, this is in front of the the two bodies, I think. Uh, the the two bodies themselves are represented here. Um, hopefully, I, you know, I don't know what the attendance count is, but it's, but you know, should be pretty close to a hundred percent of both bodies. I think it's incredibly appropriate for both bodies to be reviewing that and not splintering off and having some sort of ad hoc committee um that that ends up, um, you know, uh, trying to, um, you know, come up with something different that may not even reflect the full body's um thoughts. Um, the other piece of feedback that I've heard this evening has to do with the repor- representation, um, um, how uh how that was structured. I think there's certainly, um, you know, uh, plenty of room tonight to talk about that more. Um, uh, there is no, no right answer. Um, I think, uh, you know, I worked with Alder Foster and staff on trying to figure out um this current proposal, but I'm certainly open to suggestions on changes, but really tried to, um, continue the intent of both bodies, which is to have broad and diverse representation. Um, and also have a manageable amount of members. And so I think there are very specific requirements, um, attached to this new proposal. Um, that will bring, uh, you know, a very good broad section of, um, users and you, or users and different uses of transportation technology. Um, but I, I, but I think if there are proposals from the body tonight on, you know, I, I want, one thing being proposed, it sounds like is maybe getting rid of the regional and making that another resident, um, I'm certainly open to that if that's what, uh, people want to do, um, sure. Um, but I think, uh, you know, I think this is a, a really well-developed proposal. Um, and, uh, you know, I've given some feedback on it. I'm not trying to take credit for it, but I do think this really has taken into, um, consideration. Previous discussions about this, concerns about workload and concerns about good representation. Um, and I also do think it builds on previous efforts to look at combining our transportation committees, um, which brought us to two and, you know, figuring that out for a while and seeing whether or not two works. And I think, I think two is just too much, doesn't work. Um, you know, we continue in Madison to be an outlier when it comes to committees, um, and there's tons of task force for government structure research, uh, that, um, our city did. Um, I think this is bringing us towards the step of, um, you know, having one less committee, um, um, but doing it in a very smart, intelligent way, not just saying, you know, we don't care about the responsibilities of, uh, you know, one of these committees, we're just going to get rid of it. This does a great job of combining those responsibilities, making sure that those responsibilities are covered in a responsible, um, smart way. Um, giving, um, the people that are on those committees, um, exposure, um, and, and feedback on policy as well as implementation. So, um, I did not think I was going to be a fan of this when this came up, uh, previously. I was not a fan of this, um, when we talked about this as a, as a combined group. Um, but after all the work that's been done, um, by these bodies over the last few years and all the work that's been done on this proposal to combine it by, by staff. Um, you know, with, with the help of staff, um, I think this is the right plan at the right time as we head into a, a new alder term. Um, and so I'm, I'm incredibly supportive of it and I'm, um, looking forward to hearing more feedback and I'm certainly open to talking about, um, changes. Um, uh, tonight, um, and, uh, hopefully giving the council a good, uh, proposal to think about. Thanks.
Thank you, Alder Furman. Uh, Robbie Weber, you're up next. Go ahead, please.
Yeah, hi. Um, I had my hand up and then I put it down because I thought Alder, um, Foster covered a lot of the things I was going to say, and now I feel like Alder Furman has covered a lot of the things I was going to say, but I'm just going to give a tiny bit of historical perspective. Since I've served on city transportation commission, co- committees and commissions now for 20 years. It'll be in April. Um, and I was, I attended a lot of the meetings of for the ad hoc committee that, um, recommended combining the committees, even though I was not on them, I attended them. Um, and I think I was worried about combining all the committees way back. I think it's worked out really well. And I was at first a little worried about combining the committees here. But I think that one of the differences between when these two committees were first formed and now is that we have, um, I guess I'll say slogged through a lot of really big policy issues and planning issues. And, um, sort of outlined between the, uh, committees and staff. Um, the council, the mayor, and even the citizens, we sort of outlined where we want to go with our transportation policy and planning in the future. Um, I have to give credit to all of those, all of those entities for doing a really great job, sort of dragging our transportation system into the 21st century. Um, and I want to thank everybody for doing that since it's been a lot of work. Um, but I think that I would feel comfortable now combining these two. Um, if we wanted to keep them separate, I think I'd be okay with that as well, but I think it would be okay to combine them. And I've heard some really good arguments about why they should be combined. Um, I don't think we need another ad hoc committee because the first, the first time we combined committees, it was an enormous overhaul. I mean, a gigantic overhaul of the, the midi structure. And it kind of grew out of a larger council uh, discussion about committees in general. And the transportation ad hoc committee was sort of a outgrowth of that because that seemed to be the place where the council wanted to do some combination, uh, combining things. But I also think that with the staff we have that are really, in my opinion, doing really good work to make it easier for the committees to understand the direction that we're going. Um, I don't think that as much work needs to be done at the committee level. Um, so I guess I just wanted to sort of throw that out there and, um, say I, I would feel comfortable now combining these two. Um, it seems to be a logical progression. Um, I'm a little worried about the workload, but you know, we'll see how it goes. And I think there's always the possibility that the new transportation commission, if we have a really big issue that needs to be worked on intensively, we can always form an ad hoc committee to do that work. Um, for instance, we may need to make some decisions about taxi policy as an example. Um, we can, um, have a separate committee on that or the council can, can appoint an ad hoc committee on that, um, to do that intensive work. And, um, so I think this is going to be manageable.
Thank you, Robbie. Um, Alder Paulson, you're up next. Go ahead, please.
Yeah, so I had to laugh when Robbie said there may be a committee on taxi policy because I just came from a, this came from finance committee. I apologize for being late, um, but I have to report back to the transportation commission that, uh, the, uh, accessible taxi grant was approved by finance committee, but there was a discussion about, well, maybe we should look at some other taxi policy around that. So, uh, actually, maybe you'll see some more stuff coming back to the, back to TC. Um, a couple of things, um, I am really terrified about the workload, uh, that this new commission would get. Um, uh, I've spent a lot of time with, with TC this past winter and, and it's been wonderful working on a couple of different things, but I've been, um, shocked or amazed at how much work, um, goes into a, a TC meeting. And it's just, it's just a lot and I'm worried about putting, uh, too much more on it. Uh, but at the end of the day, there should be a thing called TC. Um, and the, the part I'm less sure about is, is what should do, you know, what should we be doing with the TPVB? I think that's kind of the bigger question of, of where does that actually fit in the, in the future? Um, uh, just one thing on the, uh, the combined TC. Um, I actually really think we should keep the regional representative. Uh, I think that's really important, uh, for us. We're a regional transit system. Um, and, and I think we want to make sure that we do have, uh, a voice from, from outside of it. Uh, just as a, a, hey, we, we want to explicitly acknowledge that we're all in this together and, and we think that's so important that we put, uh, you know, the city of Madison puts someone from outside of Madison on its governing board for its transportation, uh, system. So I think we really should keep that, um, um, uh, uh, that, that position. Um, you know, so again, I was, I, when I've been looking at this, I've been really nervous about, about the workload primarily, um, above, above all, um, but I could, I could support doing this. This is, um, you know, it's an experiment. It's not like we're cutting down a forest and, uh, you know, committing ourselves to like, if we do this, we, we can never go back. If it turns out that this is too much, um, you know, we can revisit it in a year or two years and, and say, wait, what do we want to do? And I think if we were to revisit it, it would be sort of, well, we probably need to carve off something that used, that looked like what we used to call a TPVB and reestablish that. And we're, how, how I would probably do it is, you know, some something with a lot more representation from the plan commission. Cause I think that's where we see a lot of stuff and, and, uh, so I'm the plan commission member on the TPVB, which was kind of a, uh, disservice to the TPVB because I was brand new to plan commission and then got sent to TPVB. And I barely knew anything about plan commission, much less, uh, if I could barely represent the plan commission. Uh, certainly not do an adequate job of representing the transit commission at TPVB, but I hope I've kind of stumbled through it. Uh, but one of the other things is that, uh, so a lot of times at plan commission, I see the same stuff, um, back at, um, uh, back at plan commission. So it's kind of the second show, you know, the, 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 the second time to it for, for many things. Um, and, and I think those items benefit from having the TPVB with a, with a lot of expertise on transportation. Uh, and the diversity of that expertise, uh, instead of just being one person, uh, you know, who's got some planning, uh, expert, even expertise, um, uh, at, at TPVB, I think we really benefit, uh, by having those, a lot of these proposals work their way, um, to two items where that, where it runs the gamut of transportation folks and it runs the gamut of, of planning folks. And so I think if there would be a future for this, you know, you know, if we decide that we need to create a second group, I actually think that the, the light structure for that would be sort of, we take three or four members of plan commission, we take three or four members of, of the transportation commission, we have a, a body that's joint and, and then a lot of stuff that normally goes to both TPVB and plan, or maybe both TPVB and, and TC. A lot of that can go to that committee, uh, get dealt with there and not have to go to both committees because we get the feedback, some of the early staff proposals. I think maybe we can take it off one of those, those agendas or, or, or remove some of that. So that's kind of how I would think that the future could work, um, uh, if we were to, to do that. But I think that's kind of a long way of saying that I think we could, we could move forward with a, a joint committee and see how it goes and I could, uh, uh, support that, um, but kind of with the expectation that I think there's a good chance that we'd have to revisit this in a, a year or two. And, and when we revisit that, I think that we would really rethink what the TPVB is and there's a lot of, uh, overlap. So again, I apologize for, for being late and, uh, and thanks.
Thank you, Alder Paulson. All right, Anne, you're up next. Go ahead, please. Anne, you're muted.
I'm used to being unmuted during the whole TC meeting and I'm so not used to having myself muted. Um, so the, the members of the Transportation Policy and Planning Board are usually used to seeing me sit in on their meetings. And the reason that I do that is because I have to. Because I can't understand what's coming for the transportation commission unless I know what's going on at the Transportation Policy and Planning Board. So there is so much duplication from the standpoint of, of time that's behind the scenes that I don't think people really understand. And in terms of understanding the workload concerns, I think, um, Hork looked at that. I think TFOGS looked at that. Um, and we looked at that, both the transportation commission and the transportation policy and planning board. And there was a, a heavy conversation and many of us who were opposed to the merger two years ago are no longer opposed to it because the concerns that we raised, I think have been addressed. And I think, um, leadership of both TC and TPVB and staff have worked really hard at addressing those concerns. The use of subcommittees is something that we've done very well. We had the, the, uh, traffic calming subcommittee, which was a joint subcommittee of TC and TPVB. That was huge. We spent a ton of time, uh, working on that. And, you know, that's one example of the way that we can use a subcommittee. We did have a taxi subcommittee of the transportation commission. This was actually probably the, uh, Transit and Parking Commission some years ago before the state law was changed. So the use of subcommittees works well. The appeals, um, hearing subcommittee that Chris referenced earlier is, is a way to get work done outside of the, um, the main meeting time in order to make it more efficient. But I think there are ways that we can look at that workload as more manageable because there are things that go to both bodies. There are ways to be more efficient. I mean, TC is more, much more efficient than it was several years ago, and we're still working on being more efficient. And we're looking at honing our work plan down a little bit. And I think Complete Green Streets is going to help us address some of those detailed road design discussions you were talking about, Chris, because we're going to have forums, we're going to have a process. And things aren't going to have to come to TC unless they vary from Complete Green Streets manual, from the Complete Green Streets policy and guide. Uh, so I think so many things are in place now that support our ability to do this. Um, I did, I did spend a lot of time looking at, um, the existing ordinances and comparing them. And I had some, you know, more technical comments that I won't bother spending time on here. Um, but I think that the two things that, that I thought we should consider, um, and I was happy to hear Alder Foster say that we could maybe move the Sustainable Madison Committee to a recommended. You know, I think that that, that would help. Um, not having four cross memberships required, but maybe take that down to three. And then look at maintaining that balance of, um, one additional resident, whether it comes from an alder position or whether it comes from the regional representative, just to, to make sure that we have that, um, particular type of diversity. Um, and I think, so I think, um, that addresses all of the things that I had. Um, and so I think that I, I guess I just sum it up by saying there have been a lot of discussions and people have been involved in talking about all of the concerns that are expressed here. And I think that's why there are a number of people who did not support the idea two years ago and are supporting the idea this evening like myself. So, thanks.
Thank you, Anne. Um, Alder Foster, go ahead, please.
Thanks, Chair, and thanks, uh, everyone for all the, the great discussion. Um, just wanted to chime in on the, the question of membership. So, um, I'm also open to the suggestion of, um, uh, eliminating the regional representative position. Um, I, I also hear the concern with that expressed by, um, Alder Paulson and I, I kind of feel in the middle, honestly. I, I feel like I could kind of go either way, but I think it is, um, it, it's worth considering. Um, another possible, um, way to address, um, what Anne brought up about the sort of balance between alder and residents, um, would be potentially to have, um, sort of that, the, the fourth alder position or what's designated as a fourth alder position today, um, could potentially be left, um, to be either an alder or a resident appointment and, um, leave it up to the mayor to decide. Um, kind of depending on, on the situation, what makes sense. So that could be a way to maybe thread that needle as well. Um, the real rationale for the four alder appointments, um, is, um, channeling the recommendations of TFOGS. So when they put forward kind of, um, general ideas around restructuring the way that our boards, committees and, and commissions are structured, um, one of the suggestions was, um, to really try and pare it down to some, um, important and impactful bodies. Um, this would obviously be one of those and that those, um, bodies would be, would have a, um, uh, kind of be heavily weighted towards alders. Um, so I think the, the rationale, um, in that recommendation was that if you have more alder representation and more alders actually participating in the discussions and actions around, uh, especially policy development, that, um, there's a, there's a better connection with the common council as a whole. So that was really the primary rationale for, um, kind of pushing it to be, um, as heavy as it is on the alder side. I, I think there are still benefits there and I also know it's one of the most, um, kind of popular requested, uh, committee assignments for, for alders. So I expect there will likely always be a lot of demand and desire from alders to be able to, to sit on. Um, in this case, the, the transportation body. So I think, I think there, I think, I don't think there'd be any challenge in filling those four seats, but perhaps um, either swapping the, the regional, um, seat for a resident or, um, opening up one of the alder seats to be an either or, um, could, could help give some flexibility there. Uh, I think the only other thing I would really mention is, um, I, you know, I, I also, for the first two years that I was on, um, both bodies, um, I really, I, I always had some concerns about the disconnect between policy development and implementation, um, from the early discussions at, at, um, the Transportation Ordinance Rewrite Committee. I really, um, for, sort of suspended my doubts or concerns about that and, and I really kind of committed to the, the structure the way it is now. Um, and worked hard as that crossover member, as well as the, um, vice chair of TPVB to make the system work and to make it work as best as possible. I really had no intention of trying to. to make the system work and to make it work as best as possible. I really had no intention of trying to go back and change or redo things. And it was really only after two full years of trying to do that work, that I started to feel like there was some inherent challenges with the structure. And I think my, the, the, the biggest conclusion that I came to is that the, and I think this speaks a little bit to Alder Paulson's concerns about sort of overall capacity and if we reduce the capacity with this one body, kind of what might be missing. Which I think everyone would suspect is this, this transportation policy component. And indeed, that was the primary rationale for creating the, the policy board in the first place, is that we would have a robust body to be able to accomplish a lot of transportation policy creation work. And what I've learned over my course on, on these bodies is that the ability for the Transportation Policy and Planning Board to sort of create policy on its own is almost non-existent. It's just, it's not, it's not, it's not a, an effective format for working on creating transportation policy. It's just simply too complex. It requires a lot of professional expertise that, that comes in the form of staff knowledge. It takes a huge amount of time for our large policies. Obviously, we're, we're, we have large contracts where we're bringing in consultants and experts to help with these projects. And so it's, it, I have, I have seen in spite of our best intentions, I have not seen the TPBB be able to sort of work on policy development on its own. What I have seen instead is what was mentioned earlier, I think Anne mentioned, you know, our, our Traffic Calming or Safe Streets Madison, kind of Subcommittee, ad hoc committee, I think was very effective. You know, it, it had really good membership, good participation from those that signed up for it and good staff support. So that was, that's one way that I think policy development can happen and I would hope and expect that would happen with this new body as well. But if there were a particular specific policy idea, again, a, a specific body could be created to really work on that hand in hand with staff. And then the other way that I've really seen policy, policy get developed and passed at the city is when it's led by staff and/or consultants. And then the board is really used as an advisory body and a direction setting body. And in that regard, this is, this is really my primary rationale for supporting and proposing this alignment. Is that I think in that role, the Transportation Commission and its membership that has much more experience with the specific project implementation challenges really has a, a really good idea and understanding of the challenges, the given takes in, in making these hard decisions. I have found that they often have more valuable insight, information and, and actually bring a, a much broader background and and good information to that oversight role and, as compared to the Transportation Policy and Planning Board. So I think we've got a lot of great members on the board. A lot of those, you know, some of those members have specific transportation expertise that they're bringing to it. But what we, what we board members don't have is the advantage of sitting on the Transportation Commission and seeing how these transportation policies actually play out in person. And so I, I believe that to the degree that we have future transportation policy, that's that's deserving of review and guidance and direction that a Transportation Commission with members that are really versed in, in, in the reality of policy implementation, I think would actually be in the seat to provide the, the, the most quality feedback in that policy development. So that's really the primary rationale that I am encouraging this and, and supporting it. And I think there are, I think that that, that new body will absolutely have capacity and, and the expertise to be able to be there and be a good sounding board for staff on policy development. And I, I, I know it will take a little bit of more time, but I think the end result will just be much stronger than trying to do it with a policy board that's otherwise really disconnected from how the, how our current transportation policy is implemented and the challenges that are faced through it. Thanks.
Thank you, Alder Foster. Anne Kovac, go ahead, please.
And I'd just like to ask people's opinion with regard to eliminating the regional representative. I heard what you said, Alder Paulson. But I also heard Harold mentioned earlier the number of implementation type decisions that we make with regard to, you know, Safe Streets Madison projects, with regard to road design in the city of Madison. There's new transportation demand management responsibilities that lie with the Transportation Commission. There are so many decisions that aren't part of that regional transit policy type situation. So I'm, I'm curious how others feel because this is, this is something that I, that I, I hadn't considered. But I, I did ask the question with implementation, you know, that's a different perspective when considering having a regional representative. So I'm, I'm curious what, what folks have to say about that. Thanks.
Thanks, Anne. Go ahead, Harold.
Yeah, thanks. I guess I started asking that question and as we have been going through the meeting, I think I've started forming more of a stronger opinion where I think I've come to more and more like this idea of replacing the regional representative with an additional resident appointment. Because I mean, yeah, we would love to have a regional transit system. The reality is, for the most part, we do not, for various reasons. We have other bodies that deal with regional transportation plans, which are really impactful and that contain transit and we have the MPO for that where there's very heavy representation from municipalities outside of Madison. And so I think, yeah, I've gotten more and more skeptical about having a regional representative making a lot of decisions that are really Madison-specific and where we as a city might have different interests than we, regional representatives may have. In addition to that advantage of being able then to have an additional seat to address some of the concerns that we had about like, yeah, maybe we need more broad representation on this body. Thanks.
Thank you, Harold. Tom Lynch, go ahead.
Yeah, first I, I think I need to ask permission to speak because I'm not sure if you're in deliberation or not.
So. All right, we're not, we're in discussion. You can go ahead.
Yeah, we're in discussion. You're, both chairs agree. You're, you're fine.
Okay. Just a note on that regional representation. We will be doing the North-South BRT planning and so our interaction with Pittsburgh will become more important. And, and while the MPO has a a very broad thing, you know, our, our partnership with, with Pittsburgh and in the decision-making process will, will be important. That being said, you know, this, this body will talk a lot about curb ramps on some Madison City Street, right, which might be a little bit tedious for someone from another community to, to sit through. So kind of both sides of the issue. We'll need a, a very close relationship with Pittsburgh, but this, this committee will be talking about a lot of things that won't affect Pittsburgh.
Thank you, Tom. Chris, go ahead, please.
Thanks. I think I will just briefly weigh in that I am, I'm also leaning towards not having the regional representative. Just hearing the discussion play out, I do really feel bad for that person having to sit through a lot of the Transportation Commission type conversations that we have that aren't relevant at all. I think, you know, it, it is nice to have a Pittsburgh representative when we're talking about future transit extensions, but I mean, that means that we pick a regional representative that speaks to the issue of the year or whatever the case may be. And then that, that jurisdiction has a say in Madison decisions that, you know, Middleton doesn't. And I think that's where the MPO does come in. I had another thought and I think I just lost it. Give me one second. I think that'll, that'll do. That's, that's what I'm thinking right now. Oh, oh, I got it. Just hearing some of the, the interest in having a more diverse resident representation, I think it would be a good opportunity. We've got, you know, between the two bodies now, we've got a lot of great volunteer folks from the, that are residents. And so I think having one more spot for that would be great. Thanks for being with me.
No problem, Chris. Happens to the best. All right, Alder Furman, you're up next. Go ahead, please.
Thanks. I think to be clear, it's a regional representative, not necessarily a Pittsburgh representative. It is now. But you know, as Chris said, like, you know, are we then going to pick based on whoever the partner is? I think one thing we can consider is a model of you know, having a non-voting member be a regional representative and have them come to meetings. When, when they, when they feel like there are topics on the agenda that would be appropriate for them to be there. But I think as people have said, requiring that person to be at the meetings and talk about sidewalks in some random place or you know, be involved in some of the street design stuff that has absolutely nothing to do with their community. I think that's a heavy lift and I'm absolutely open to removing that. And as I said, possibly considering either not having it at all or having it be a, a non-voting member. I believe, yeah, I believe we could figure out a model for that.
Thank you, Alder Furman. Alder Paulson, go ahead, please.
Yeah, I just want to really reiterate that I feel really strongly we should keep the, the regional representative. First up, we, we absolutely do have a regional transportation system. It's not as governed as well as we would have liked. It's not funded as well as we would have liked, but I mean, watch where traffic is coming from, watch where our, you know, we've we've just done a new deal with Sun Prairie to do it, you know, a, a great expansion with Metro there. We're talking with Manona to get them involved. I mean, we're doing a really great job of expanding this. And so I, you know, watch where bikes are going, where are people, where do people start their bike rides and go off? You know, we are going all over the place. You know, we don't have a lot of people walking from Middleton to, to downtown, but all other modes of transportation people are, it's absolutely regional. And, and so I think it's important that we do that. I think it's important that they stay a voting member. I think this is a sign to the other municipalities that, you know, we want regional cooperation and we believe in it so strongly that we are giving part of our, we're giving you a vote on how some of the transportation stuff works in Madison. And, and I just think that as, as an area, we need to continue that. Yes, the, you know, the the MPO does some of this work and CARPC does some of this work and, 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 and share, but but I think just as a sign from Madison of how, how much we value this, I think it's important to put our, our money where our mouth, or put our voting where our mouth is. I actually think that it's great for them to sit through this. I would love for someone from Manona to at some point be on this committee and, and have to listen to us about sidewalks for a couple of hours because hopefully something rubs off on them and they go back to Manona and say, gosh, I, you know, look at all those great reasons for why we should have sidewalks in this place. And so Manona should join the 21st century and put sidewalks in their charming little city. And 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 I think, you know, kind of flavor of, you know, issue of the year, I think that that's a responsibility of the mayor. Like, I think next year probably should be someone from Pittsburgh when the next a regional representative has to come up precisely because of the North-South transit issue, but maybe, you know, maybe in a couple of years, it's going to be, you know, some, some, you know, we're going to be dealing with some big interchanges out in in Middleton. And so we'll want someone from Middleton to be on it. And I think that the mayor will select as appropriate, kind of looking ahead. Where does it make most sense to have some representatives? I'm less concerned about the exact number of, of citizens versus alder appointments. And, and I think that helping to, to get that through diversity, having, having a, the ability to to not require it to be an alder to help us on the diversity of background on, on the committee is, is useful. The TPBB has, has four alders on it, but that's not by design. It's just I'm on it because I'm the Plan, I'm the Plan Commission representative, not because I'm an, an alder. And so that might be something that we, you know, maybe we do sacrifice an alder position on on the new commission, but understand that it may be an additional alder because that might be what makes sense from balancing from somewhere else, depending on what the, what the needs of the committee are and what the interests of the various alders are. Sometimes we can, you know, play some double count games there. So I think if I were to give up something on the committee, I would rather give up, if I were to give up something so we have an additional citizen resident member, I would give up the alder position rather than the regional representative, because I think the regional representative is really important to, to, a really important signal for this committee. And we really want on it. And if we did decide that we want more alders on it, there are other ways to, to get an alder on it without changing the, the compositions. That's where I come down and I hope we keep the regional representative. Thank you.
Thank you, Alder Paulson. Anne Kovac, you're up next. Go ahead, please.
I, after listening to everybody, I'm leaning heavily toward agreeing with the suggestion to replace the regional rep with another resident. And, and I think the idea of a non-voting member is an interesting one, but I, but I, I just want everybody to remember that we can invite people to come to this new Transportation Commission whenever it, it's appropriate for them to be there. We had folks from Sun Prairie come and sit at TC when we were talking about working with them on, on extending the bus line out to Sun Prairie. We can invite people from Pittsburgh to come and talk about this, the North-South BRT when that's appropriate. Bring in people from Middleton whenever that's appropriate. And, and in my mind, that's even better because then you get the exact right people there to talk about it, as opposed to you have one regional rep for two years and, and maybe it's, maybe it's as applicable to them. Or maybe it's not. So I, I think that that's something that we could, we could certainly consider is inviting the people to come, be part of the conversation as it's most appropriate. So that we don't lose that regional input and we have the appropriate regional input. Thanks.
Thank you, Anne. Alder Foster, go ahead, please.
Thanks Chair and thanks again, everybody. Great discussion. I had a quick question for Tom Lynch. Tom, the, I believe that there is some sort of group of kind of Madison metro community stakeholders that does get together or work with staff in some ways. Can you confirm that or just share a little bit about, I guess, opportunities outside of the, the Transportation Policy and Planning Board deliberations? Where member communities, transit, Metro Transit member communities sort of have a, a, a voice or opportunity for participation?
Yeah, so Metro Transit on a, let's say either quarterly or bi-monthly basis has a a contracting partners meeting. And it's used kind of as an information promulgation type of of a meeting where Justin or Mick or the like will kind of explain what's going on. That meeting isn't really used for decision-making necessarily. And it's at the staff level rather than at the elected official level, but it's still a very useful meeting. And it's, and I think its importance is going to grow as time goes on.
Thanks for that info, Tom. Yeah, I guess having heard all the, the arguments, I'm also leaning pretty strongly at this point about recommending removing that, the requirement of that and converting it to a, a resident appointment. I'm definitely open to a, to a non-voting member. I think there is good precedent. With that, on Plan Commission today, for example, I believe there's the Madison Metropolitan School District Superintendent or Designee is a, a non-voting member on Plan Commission. So I think that is something that could be considered, although I'm not convinced that even that is quite worthwhile because I, I think I really agree with what Anne was describing that in practice, I think it makes more sense to really give, give invitations to, to those that are impacted for any discussions and invite them to come and, and, and participate in the conversation, which is certainly in order whenever the, the body would want that. I do, I, I think part of my concern is that I think it's challenging for any, for, for a specific regional rep, particularly if they're coming from another municipality. So we've, you know, we've had the experience of Pittsburgh. Maybe that I just heard there's a suggestion, well, maybe I should stay in Pittsburgh because of North-South BRT. Well, then what are the other member communities feeling about their representation? Or should we switch it, you know, rotate it to other communities? And I think the idea that any of those representatives And I think the idea that any of those representatives can sort of easily represent all of the other regional sort of partners or member communities is itself a real challenge. And when I think about actual deliberations or decisions where it might really implicate regional partners, I think of network redesign is probably the most obvious. And, you know, in reality, discussions with other municipalities around service all pretty much happened at the staff level and with those municipalities. And recommendations around routing, for example, were, came after, you know, agreements around service levels and contracts between municipalities. And I feel like it's, in some ways, even sort of exposes ourselves in a strange way that a regional rep for a specific municipality may be in a position where they don't, they don't like something that's just impacting their community and might want to vote against the whole thing, even though they're not really acting on behalf of all sort of regional partners. So I think the more that I sit on it, the more I agree that there may be more challenges than benefits to it. And so, yeah, I think at least the, in terms of a regular position that counts towards quorum and has voting privileges, I think it would be wise to consider shifting that. And I guess I'm still open to a non-voting member that also doesn't perhaps isn't required or needed for quorum that can come when they, when they want, would be fine. Although, at the end of the day, it might be most effective to really just invite anyone who's relevant to discussions to the meetings.
Thank you, Alder Foster. Alder Paulson.
Yeah, I was just gonna say that MMSD has a spot on the Plan Commission. They have not filled it in years. It's non-voting. They haven't come for a long time. Now, granted, there's been a lot going on in the schools lately, and so kind of understandable. But it's non-voting and it's not a super high priority for them. We wish that they were, we wish that they were there, but we haven't seen them in a long time. And so I'm not sure that a non-voting position is going to get you anywhere. But maybe we can find someone who's more interested rather than MMSD, who might have just bandwidth challenges.
Thank you, Alder Paulson. Bridget Brown, go ahead, please.
Yeah, thanks, Tom. I'm just wondering from a procedural standpoint, to make that change to the proposal, what would need to happen? To make the change from a regional rep?
So we're gonna, we're gonna, oh, we can go ahead.
You wanted to try first, Tom?
Sure. So we're gonna vote on this in two parts. The TC will go first, so Chair Kovac will ask for motion. So if the motion that's presented first includes that change, then that would be the motion. And then we'll go through the same process irregardless of the outcome at TC. The Transportation Policy and Planning Board will go through the same process after TC's done voting. And if you want to add anything, that could
Yeah, so Bridget, when we get to the point where we entertain the motion, you, someone could make the motion that we recommend this to the council with the recommendation that we remove the regional representative position and add another resident member, voting member to the recreated TC.
Okay, thank you for the clarification.
Sure.
Thanks, Ann.
All right, any additional questions or discussion? Harold.
Yeah, since it looks like maybe there's no more discussion, then I would make a motion to
Go ahead, Carl. So this would be a Transportation Commission motion. Go ahead.
Okay. So I would move that we recommend to the council the proposal to consolidate the commission with the change that the regional representative be replaced with another resident appointment. And that the requirement for one of the members to be a member of the Sustainable Madison Committee, Commission Committee, I think, be changed to a strong recommendation, but not a requirement.
Okay. Is there a second? Alder Harrington, Robbie, that's a second? Okay, we have a motion and a second. So further discussion from the Transportation Commission. Alder Harrington McKinney?
Okay, thank you, Madam Chair. While consolidating the two transportation groups into a single commission or board makes sense, and it does eliminate meetings on the same subjects. And this was very, very fruitful conversation. And I could check off on my list identification duplications. I can check that off. I can certainly check off efficiency, efficiencies. I can certainly check off ad hoc committee. And what I'm left with is that the workload. I'm left with the diversity representation. I can even check off the resident membership, leaning toward that more so than adding other alders, and I can check that off. I like the idea of a possible subcommittee for those detailed conversations. And the expertise around the TC has been extraordinary. I still have some questions as to, you know, are we ready to move forward? And because I have those questions, I will not be supporting moving toward combining both of these committees together at this time. And I am asking for a roll call vote.
Okay, so we'll have a roll call vote. The motion on the table is to recommend the proposal to consolidate to the common council with the change that the regional representative be replaced with another resident appointment. And the requirement that one member also be a member of the Sustainable Madison Committee be changed to a recommendation. Harold, did I get that all?
Sounds good to me.
Okay, is there a further discussion from TC members? Alder Harrington McKinney, you're here. Okay, it's down. Any further discussion from TC members? Okay, Aiden, if you'd call a roll, please.
Sure thing. Alder Harrington McKinney?
Uh, no.
Chris McAho?
Hi.
Sorry, it cut out.
Hi.
Robbie Weber?
Was that an I? Okay.
That wasn't.
Was an I? Okay, thank you.
Hi.
And Harold claims.
Hi.
So that's four I's and one no.
And since Denise, I would tell you Denise had to drop off. And she apologized for that. She did say she was sorry to miss the vote. She had another commitment at 6:30. But she was favorable to combining the bodies and leaning toward replacing the regional rep with a resident. And per the city rules, we need four I's for the motion to carry, so the motion is carried. Tom?
Thank you, Chair Kovac. Is there a motion for Transportation Policy and Planning Board? Alder Foster?
I would move the same recommendation that TC just approved.
Thank you. Is there a second? Alder Furman's got his hand waving. I'll take that as a second. All right, discussion. Alder Paulson?
Yeah, I was wondering if we could just move this as an amendment, because I'd like to vote no against the recommendation, but yes in the final form. So however we did this, I'd like to be recorded as no on, no on the removal, and I'm happy to just propose an amendment and have it be voted down and move on.
That sounds like probably the best way to go about it.
Okay, well, I'd like to make a motion to move the original the original draft and not the, and not the changed.
Okay, is there a second? Is there a second? I'm not seeing a second. Okay, McAndrews?
I was just kind of confused. Can you restate what we're looking for?
You can go ahead, Alder Paulson, or I can go.
Oh, I wanted to move the original body rather than the I want to move the original, I guess, motion rather than the motion with the change to drop the
Regional representative.
So
That's the only difference is, well, I guess, and then the recommendation of the Sustainable Madison Committee. But I assume maybe Alder Paulson, you meant to keep that in there.
Yeah, maybe I should just flat out say I want to amend the motion before us to restore the regional representative. And I think Alder Foster just, thank God, finally you're doing it the right way.
All right, does that make sense? So this would
So we're voting, we're gonna vote on something different than what the transportation committee voted on.
In a way, so Alder Paulson, go ahead.
Yeah, so Alder Paulson is, has made a motion to change the recommendation. And right now it's looking for a second in order to debate it. So if no one seconds it, then we won't consider that. If someone seconds it, then we'll debate the merits of changing the recommendation.
Thank you.
Alder Harrington McKinney?
I'll second for discussion.
Okay, thank you. All right, we have a motion and a second discussion. Alder Paulson, did you want to speak further?
I have spoken plenty on this.
Okay. All right, is everyone clear on what we're voting on right now? So it's the original, the original text that would retain a regional representative. If the clerk would please call the roll. So an I is to, in favor of the amendment, which would retain the regional representative. No would take us back to our original motion, which then we'll vote on again. That would eliminate the regional representative. Just to make sure everyone's completely clear. If the clerk would please call the roll. Oh, Bald, sorry, go ahead.
Okay. Yeah, I just have a quick question. Which one, which one will keep the regional representation?
If you want the regional representative to stay, vote I. If you want the regional representative to go and be a resident member for this motion, vote no. All right, everybody clear? Okay, please proceed.
Bald Cesar DeHannah Santana?
No.
Barbara Harrington McKinney?
No.
Carolyn McAndrews?
I'm so sorry. Can you remind me again what a no is and what a yes is, an I would be?
A no will, a no does not keep the regional representative. So well, we will go back to the original motion and then vote on it.
An I keeps the regional representative?
Yes.
No, thank you.
Christopher McAhill?
No.
Eric Paulson? Alder Paulson?
Hi. Sorry, did I just vote twice?
You were muted for part of that, I think.
Okay, sorry.
Grant Foster?
No.
Keith Fermin?
No.
Okay. Audrey Langkelleb?
No.
Okay, I have seven noes, one I. That motion fails, so we're back to our original motion. Any further discussion? All right, seeing none. On the motion to repeal section 33.55 and 33.56 and recreating section 33.56 of the Madison General Ordinance is to create a transportation commission and amending sections 3.14 and 16.01. Remove references to the Transportation Policy and Planning Board with the recommendations that the member from the Sustainable Madison Committee be a strong recommendation, but not a requirement. And that the regional representative be removed and replaced with an additional resident member. If you prefer, please call a roll. An I is in favor and a no is opposed.
Audrey Langkelleb?
No.
Bald Cesar DeHannah Santana?
Hi.
Barbara Harrington McKinney?
No.
Carolyn McAndrews?
Hi.
Christopher McAhill?
Hi.
Eric Paulson?
Hi.
Grant Foster?
Hi.
Keith Fermin?
Hi.
All right, I have six I's, two noes. Motion carries. All right. Our next item then is, let's just, our 75910, creating section 33.565E of the Madison General Ordinance is to add Green Streets Initiative to the responsibilities of the Transportation Commission. Alder Foster?
Yeah, just to help expedite things, so this is, this is simply adding the ones who are required component related to completing Green Streets to the purview of the Transportation Commission. In the case that the, the recommendation that was just passed is not passed by the council and the existing Transportation Commission is left the way it is. This would add the section to their, to that existing ordinance related to the responsibilities that were approved as part of the Complete and Green Streets policy. So I think at this point, it's a pretty sort of straightforward amendment.
Thank you, Alder Foster. Ann Kovac?
I would also say, even if this pass, even if the recreated TC passes, I think it's appropriate to have complete green streets added to the existing ordinance because then that would be in place until there are appointments to the new Transportation Commission. In which case, it would, it would work to be expanded until that time. So I think either way, it works.
Thank you, Ann. Tom, go ahead.
I was a little confused. I think the first ordinance revision that you voted on does incorporate complete green streets. And so one or the other will be passed. What Chair Kovac said, that was interesting, that basically it would be used in the interim for a month or so until which is, I guess I hadn't considered that, but that, that could be the truth.
Right, thank you, Tom. Any further questions or discussion?
Yeah, I, yeah, Tom, I just want to make sure that we act on it so that we, we get this taken care of. And, you know, it may only be in place for a little while, but in any event, thanks.
Thanks, Ann. Yeah, we'll go about it the same way we went about the previous item.
Yep.
Chris, go ahead.
I guess if I'm understanding correctly, another benefit of approving this now would be that common council may not approve the merger of the two bodies, and so we would want this in place. So I think that's correct.
Yep.
Thank you, Chris.
So we would need a motion from someone on the Transportation Commission, Bridget?
Yeah, I'd like to move, yep, move this.
Okay, move approval. Harold, is that a second?
Second, yeah.
Okay, so we're recommending this to the common council. I'm going to assume a unanimous consent vote from the Transportation Commission unless anybody wishes to vote no. If so, please raise your hand. Or if you wish a roll call vote. Okay, seeing no hands, Tom, that TC approved it?
Okay, is there a motion for TPBB? Alder Furman?
Same motion as TC.
Thank you. Is there a second? Second by Chris, thank you. Any discussion? All right, seeing none on the motion to create section 33.565E of the Madison General Ordinance is to add Green Streets Initiative to the responsibilities of the Transportation Commission. All who's in favor of that recommendation, please unmute yourselves and say hi.
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 Oh, no. Fairly unanimous, if you'd like to register a no vote, please raise your hand. Seeing no hands raised, that will go down as unanimous, thank you. Um, that's all the items that we have for our joint meeting. Uh, thank you all for standing.
So we'll need a motion to adjourn from the Transportation Commission? Uh, Robbie and Chris and Harold, we have a first, a second and a third there. Okay, uh, and we'll assume unanimous consent vote unless anybody wishes to vote no. We've never had anybody vote no on a journey, so we're adjourned. And I'm just going to stay and listen to the rest of the meeting, but thanks, everybody. Um, great discussion.
Thank you all. Of course, you're all welcome to stay and, and listen and participate if you'd like. Um, assuming the board, uh, give a participation. All right, um, Transportation Policy and Planning Board, moving on to Legisstar six-six-three-nine-nine, adopting the Hawthorne Truax Neighborhood Plan as a supplement to the City of Madison Comprehensive Plan.
We have Linda Horbath here to, uh, present. Is she, um?
Yes, I'm here and ready to go, so I will, I will share my screen and, um, kick things off. Thank you. So, whoops. Making sure that this connection's going a little slower. Um, good evening, everybody. Linda Horbath with City of Madison Planning Division. I'm here on behalf of the Hawthorne Truax Neighborhood Plan Team, that included myself and Dan McCullough of our staff as project co-managers. And then Brianna Collins and Mary Rose Eckberg as our project team, also part of our project team. So we're here for a couple of different reasons this evening, and one is, um, noted in the agenda. Uh, it's really to, um, ask for you to recommend adoption of the plan to the Plan Commission. They're the lead, uh, body on this project, um, and they will be, uh, the ones to ultimately approve it. And then the common council adopts it as a part of the city's comprehensive plan. Um, for that purpose, uh, but then, of course, first I wanted to give you a little overview of the plan and its recommendations, which, uh, I think you have seen a couple of different times. One being in, um, October of last year, we came to this body. So I want to show some of the changes we made as a result of the conversation during that meeting, as well as, uh, public feedback we've received, uh, since then, that time, conversations with city staff, et cetera. So we're planning for the area shown on the screen in red, um, State Highway thirty to the south, Mendota Street to the east, Piercedorf Street to the north, um, and Bridges Gulf Course, um, and other county land to the west. There are about three thousand residents in this area spanning five different neighborhoods. Um, the current plan is twenty-two years old, uh, so we want to update that plan. Um, and really, the city and the neighborhood have been experiencing fifty percent faster growth than was anticipated by the comprehensive plan. So this area is, is faced with quite a bit of growth. So we've got some land use recommendations in there, transportation, those are the two main areas that will help guide the growth over time, ten to fifteen years is the plan horizon. Um, we want to build off of, uh, the bus rapid transit that's coming in twenty-twenty-four, uh, metro transit redesign, US Highway fifty-one redesign, uh, which Tom and company have been very involved with, um, and the Imagination Center that's coming to Reindel Park is an aspect of something that we build off of with this plan. The process included three phases. Um, we did quite a bit of public participation throughout the plan. Um, we started with a map, uh, and interactive, um, comment, uh, or interactive comic map and data book. Uh, we had a community partners group that we set up right away that included representatives from the diverse population living in this area. Um, we held virtual in-person meetings, um, and we did a lot of different work with groups like Hawthorne PTA, um, East Madison Community Center and Madison College. Um, themes really centered around affordability concerns. Um, this area is growing, as I mentioned, and people see that development marching up East Washington Avenue. And they see the changes in affordability in our city as well as all over the place. Um, so they want to make sure that, uh, fully that they currently experience is maintained. Um, there's many different redevelopment opportunities, particularly along East Washington Avenue, um, vacant properties, um, and properties that, um, that could be redeveloped, uh, for other reasons as well. Um, better crossings of these major roads that are in the area, um, is really critically important to people. East Washington bisects the area. Um, we've got that US Highway fifty-one coming through the area. So the area is divided up, uh, by these areas. Um, there's really no there. People see a lack of neighborhood restaurants, cafes, retail and gathering places. Um, childcare and community services are in some cases lacking. And we want to look at better employment access as well in this area. Public feedback was translated into a set of shared values and intentions, and these reflect community as well as city agency and other agency, um, values. Uh, you can see in gold the recommendations that we consider to be directly relatable to those values that we heard throughout the process. Um, and I won't go over them, but, but you can see them on the screen. Um, draft transportation recommendations really center around, um, a few, uh, or several key things. Um, we're supporting bus rapid transit improvements, uh, with the recommendations. We feel we've got goals for US Highway fifty-one redesign in there. Um, sidewalk and pedestrian improvements throughout, um, and, and particularly, uh, closing some of those sidewalk gaps, um, as new streets, um, or streets reconstructed. We also have a whole different street extensions in this area as well. So in terms of supporting bus rapid transit, um, our land use plan, we feel is really promoting higher intensity, uh, development near bus rapid transit stations. We also promote good pedestrian access, um, at those connections, and that's a real opportunity here with all the investment, uh, being made. Um, active ground floors as well as, as the buildings redevelop. Um, goals for, um, redesigning Highway fifty-one really centered around the conversations we had in the community about what a barrier this already is. And concerns that it could become even more of a barrier over time. People point to Verona Road and they see how that became such a massive structure and they're concerned this might become that as well. So really, how can this, um, improvement be an improvement, not just for those traveling through the area, but for the people that live right there? How can it be more human scale, particularly at the intersections with Anderson, East Washington and Lexington? Um, people are trying to get across, uh, particularly from neighborhoods like Truax where you have a concentration of public housing. Um, they need to get over to, uh, Walgreens, um, and then we've got the Reindel Imagination Center coming. Won't that be a terrific, uh, improvement? Um, but, you know, there are a lot of kids over there in the Truax housing and they'll want to be crossing over there at Anderson. So how can we make these crossings much better for, for folks? Um, we also want to make sure that with this redesign, we have continued use, um, or redevelopment of adjacent properties. You see in the lower right corner, um, a concept for how, um, some properties at that East Washington and Highway fifty-one interchange could potentially redevelop. Um, but we want to maintain local street connections so people can get to the businesses, um, that are there and, uh, potentially adding a, a local street, um, alongside, um, Woodman's or a redeveloped property there that would allow access, continued access to that. Um, I guess that'd be the north eastern corner there. Um, sidewalk needs, um, you know, this area was developed largely, um, uh, some of it anyway, um, when lands were in townships. Um, and so some of these streets were not developed with curb gutter and sidewalk. So as the streets, uh, redevelop or as they're reconstructed, um, sidewalks will be built and that will be especially important, um, along Lexington Avenue where we have Hawthorne Elementary School, um, that's going to be, uh, important. Um, and then there's an area, um, just north of East Washington Avenue that, uh, lacks sidewalks right now. And, you know, uh, students are getting off, um, Metro and they've got to navigate over to, um, Madison College. And we, we heard comments from those folks that there are no sidewalks, so how do they get over there? Additional draft recommendations focus on other elements of the comprehensive plan outside of land use and transportation. We're kind of covering all those elements, so this is a comprehensive, um, special area plan. Affordable housing, we, we do have a affordable housing fund through the city. And that is being used, for example, to redevelop the former Bimbo Bakery site at the corner of Fair Oaks and East Washington, right at the center of our planning area. We want to see continued use of that program as well as others, um, the Part with one fifty-one program to help protect, um, households as well as the school. We heard a lot of, uh, thoughts about that too, um, from the airport sounds, um, and the upcoming, uh, fighter jets coming in that are much louder. Um, so there are quite a few other recommendations beyond just land use and transportation, of course. Um, so I did include changes since we last visited this body in October, um, in the memo that, that is up on Legisstar. Uh, but you can see those changes on the screen. Um, if grade separation is needed for US Highway fifty-one, uh, we feel East Washington Avenue should remain at grade, um, and the, the, uh, highway sunk below it. Um, the designs from twenty-fourteen that are sort of the, the current designs that are publicly available for, from the DOT don't meet these goals. Um, and, uh, myself and Dan and Tom and other staff are working with DOT on trying to make a more human scale design occur there. Um, so you see some of those other changes as well, uh, since we last met with you. Your actions have taken place. They're critically important to our team when we do a plan like this because we are in the community, uh, and very visible out there. We hear a lot of things, um, during our engagement that can actually be addressed before the plan is even adopted. And one major thing, uh, that city engineering, uh, did was to fix the drainage pump underneath, um, East Washington Avenue under the tunnel that goes, um, oh, uh, you know, underneath the tunnel that was flooding pretty regularly, particularly in the spring. Um, we heard from walking school bus, uh, folks that take kids over to Hawthorne Elementary that, uh, last spring, there was a foot of water in that tunnel. Um, and some of the volunteers were carrying students on their backs to get through the tunnel. Uh, that pump has been fixed and we're hoping in spring that it doesn't flood. Um, uh, that, that tunnel is a critical connection for Truax, uh, young people who are trying to get over to the other side, over to the school, uh, and other places. And so we feel like we can and we must, as a city, do a much better job, uh, with that facility. Um, of course, bus rapid transit, there's be a station, um, up above, uh, but on the opposite side of the intersection. So what can we do there? We, we feel like we, we can do something better. Um, the community did paint an amazing mural down there. Um, we think, uh, some lighting upgrade might be in order. Um, there potentially could be some simple things. Um, the community is going to be implementing quite a few of the recommendations in the plan. As you might have seen, um, they're already in conversations around the Hawthorne Community School and how that can be expanded. Financial literacy workshops with some of the, the, the financial groups in the area and some neighborhood events and activities. So this plan has two hundred and fifty thousand dollars of community development block grant money attached to it. Um, this last couple of months, we've been out in the community asking people, what do they want to see happen with that money? Um, and that will get spent, these projects will get built in the next two or three years. They, they have to because the federal funding has a time limit on it. Um, a basketball court far and away was the most talked about improvement in the, in the Truax area. So we as staff are in conversations with property owners. Where could that basketball court go? Because it, it, it really, again and again, when we were out talking to families at the East Madison Community Center, at the Hawthorne Elementary School, it just kept coming up over and over again. Um, bike skills type parks and facilities, we've got that amazing pump track down at Eldo Leopold Park, which neighborhood residents have just fallen in love with. The kids are on it all the time. Course tracks people from outside the neighborhood as well. Um, uh, accessible play equipment at Hawthorne Elementary was another, um, a big ask. And then taking a look at those, uh, pedestrian underpasses, again, at East Washington Avenue, at Highway thirty, where the Marshview Path, uh, travels under Highway thirty. Um, what can we do to, um, make these more attractive places? But also maybe less attractive to things that have been making people feel unsafe. Um, you know, maybe getting, uh, deterring loitering, um, deterring some of the graffiti that's been happening under that East Washington Avenue facility. Uh, and really looking at possibilities for artwork that could include, um, some interesting lighting, uh, maybe some sound associated with it. Uh, there's some pretty cool things out there, and again, we do have some implementation money, uh, to address these issues right away. So we're here this evening, we did get, um, approval from Community Development Block Grant Committee at its meeting last week. Uh, they recommended to the Plan Commission approval of the plan. Uh, we'll be going to board a park commissioners March eighth, um, Community Development Authority, March ninth. Um, then to the lead Plan Commission on the thirteenth. And that's what I have as far as the presentation, and I'd like to, um, answer any questions and invite other staff here as well to answer any questions folks have.
All right, thank you, Linda. Questions? Being known, um, is there a motion? Alder Paulson?
Yeah, I'd like to, uh, move recommend a, the Hawthorne Truax Plan to the Plan Commission.
Thank you, is there a second? Second by, I think Audrey got there first. Um, any further discussion, Alder Paulson, did you want to speak further to your motion?
Uh, no, I'll just say that I've seen this plan over the past couple of months, uh, and it has been, uh, excellent work by, uh, the staff and the community, and I'm looking forward to seeing this adopted.
Great, thank you. Um, any further discussion? Last call. Okay, on the motion to recommend adoption, adopting the Hawthorne, uh, Truax Neighborhood Plans as a supplement to the City of Madison Comprehensive Plan. Um, all those in favor, please unmute yourselves and say aye.
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 Opposed, no? Chair, please, unanimous, if you'd like to register a no vote, please raise your hand. Seeing no hands raised, that will go down as unanimous, thank you. Uh, thank you, Linda. Our next item is Legisstar seven-five-eight-nine-three, repealing MGO, uh, twelve-point-seven-six-two and three, which prohibits bicycle trick riding and bicycles on foot bridges. Alder Foster?
Thanks, Chair, I can, uh, speak to this as I'm a sponsor of it. Uh, so this is, um, I think a pretty straightforward ordinance amendment removes two provisions of current ordinance. Um, uh, one is related to the prohibition of bicycle trick riding. Um, this is on a lot of, uh, city ordinances, it's really not well defined. It's actually not really, um, something that's enforced, um, um, in any real way. Um, but it's just, uh, it's something that's available and, and can be used, um, in a, um, in a selective way in terms of enforcement. Um, and doesn't, um, so it's, the recommendation is to remove it from our ordinances. And the second part is related to, um, a prohibition, um, of bicycles on a footbridge. Um, this is a little bit confusing because it says, um, you can't ride a bike on a footbridge, but it's not really clear what footbridges are. Um, and it, it says unless it's posted that you can. And I, in speaking with, um, transportation staff, uh, they agreed that, um, if there are any, uh, footbridges where we do want to prohibit bicycle riding, it would be, um, more clear to actually post that it's not, that bicycle riding is not allowed on that footbridge rather than vice versa. So this essentially removes, um, sort of a confusing, um, ordinance and prohibition that also is not something that's currently enforced. Um, and allows staff to, um, still post a prohibition for, um, bicycle riding on a footbridge if there were such a, a, a case that would come up.
Uh, thank you, Alder Foster. Um, questions or Alder Hinkin, McKinney?
Uh, thank you, Chair. Um, so, um, thank you for the explanation because I definitely, um, wanted to hear the reasoning behind these two repeals. Um, and so they seem to be safety standards, and so are we, number one, by removing those? And I did hear you say that, um, the city still has the authority to post in any areas where there is concern. Um, does that cover both of these audience? Do, are we putting ourselves at risk at all? I guess I'd just like to hear a little bit more from the, um, the maker of this repeal. I guess I'm not understanding why, why now?
All right, Alder Foster?
Uh, yeah, I mean, in terms of the, the timing, um, it's something that I believe should be repealed, so I put it forward. There's nothing really specific about the timing. Um, the, in terms of the prohibition on footbridge, you're correct, it, city staff has the ability to prohibit it, um, in any place where it would be warranted. I think one good example that I raise as a conf-. Think one good example that I raise as a confusing um location would be the the bridge over the um. Uh, the Harrah um River, uh, it's sort of an essentially an extension of Jennifer Street. Um, you know, is this a footbridge or not? Who knows? Um, it's certainly used um very frequently by people riding their bicycle, including many children that ride their bicycles to um. Um, to the elementary and middle school there and there's no expectation that um bicycle riding should be prohibited. But with given this, the language of this um current ordinance is just um confusing. Um, and in terms of. Uh, trick riding, again, it's really not even defined. And so you'd have, there there's um, you know, what is trick riding? Is it by? Taking one of your hands off the of the handlebar, the popping a wheelie. Um, you know, should we also prohibit skateboarding? Um, you know, ollies or other things or people from doing cartwheels um or whatever? So I think, you know, there there could be some risk involved if somebody attempted trick riding and they fell. Um, but I don't think it protects members of the community in any way. So that's um why I'm recommending that it be repealed.
Okay, any further questions or did I have more discussion? Seeing none, is there a motion? Uh, Chris? Oh, all right.
Yeah, I can do that. Yeah, uh, move approval.
All right, thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Alder Paul Foster's hand is up there. Okay, any further discussion? All right, seeing none on the motion to recommend repealing. Um, M G O twelve point seven six two and three, which prohibits bicycle trick riding and bicycles on footbridges. All those in favor of recommendation, please unmute yourselves and say aye.
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 No? Opposed, no? Are you voting no? Okay, Chair believes it's uh one no and the remainder are ayes. Um, so that carries. All right, our next item is Legistar seven five eight four two repealing M G O uh twelve point seven eight two, which regulates the sales and rentals of bicycles. Alder Foster?
Uh, yes, Chair, I'd also like to just suggest that we take up at this time um items eight and nine at the same time. All three of these ordinance are are really uh one change. Um, and so if we could uh just consider them together, um, I think would be appropriate.
Is there any objection to doing that? Alder Paulson?
Yeah, I'm gonna vote no on one of them, so I would prefer not to take them up all at the same time.
All right, we'll just do them separately if that's okay with you, Alder Paulson. All right, um. Go ahead, uh, for seven five eight four two, the sale of all bicycles.
Uh, great. So this um as well as the the other ones are a provision of our um. Our traffic uh chapter. That required re- create created requirements for licensing of bicycle dealers um as well as regulating the sale and rental of bicycles. Um, these ordinances were really uh connected to a previous ordinance that um was repealed. That required bicycle licenses um in the City of Madison. Um, as part of that ordinance, it required bicycle dealers to um offer and sell licenses. When the ordinance that required bicycle licenses was repealed. Um, these uh through a companion um ordinances were not. And so today we have a situation where we're still requiring. Uh, bicycle dealers to um to pay for a license to be a bicycle dealer. We don't have such things for um, you know, many other uh retail activities. It's not something that's enforced today, uh particularly for uh big box stores like Walmart or others that sell bicycles. And so right now you just have a a few select um small businesses that um tho- those that have. That are aware of the requirement, who are paying a few hundred dollars a year, um really for no good reason for this license. And so this would um. This would repeal. Uh, the one that's in front of us right now um repeals the ordinance that is regulating the sale and rental of bicycles.
All right, thank you, Alder Foster. Questions and discussion, Alder Paulson?
Yeah, I was gonna vote against this because I didn't like selling bikes without proving ownership. I thought that was a problem. Um, and uh, I thought that was that was asking for for a problem, but I didn't realize that we had. Repealed the. Uh, bicycle registration. That's what I get for not riding bikes. Um, so um. So maybe. I'm still a little concerned about that, that. That people can just sell fenced bikes, but maybe there's a better way to address that. And so perhaps Alder Foster can kind of walk us through any concerns on. How do we deal with uh stolen bikes?
All right, Alder Foster, if you want to respond?
Yeah, thank you. And yeah, I appreciate the concern on it as well. Um, the, I mean, right now, it it is a real issue, um, you know, bike, bike. Overwhelmingly, what happens in that case is the bicycles are actually transferred out of the the city and sold in other locations um to avoid the the. Possibility of discovering it. Um, so the current work by M P D when they're um working on cases of. Um, bike thefts are really focused on um uh catching the actual um. When when folks are actually taking the bikes. And there's very little um sale activity that leads to um arrests or um dealing with the sale of of stolen bicycles. So I think in a in effect, this ordinance in particular um is not um. It is not is not used to help uh prevent or slow down the um theft of and resale of bicycles in the community.
Okay, thank you. I will probably vote. To recommend, but I may change my mind by the time we get to council. I'm gonna do a little bit more for homework. And this was the only one that I had any objection to. So certainly the next two, I. I'm not gonna object to taking them up up at the same time. So thank you. I just wanna understand that a little bit better, but we'll take that up offline, but we can move forward with it as is now. It probably seems like it's a good idea. If we can't prove, if you can't prove that it was owned, there's no way to prove that you owned it anyway, then like, why are we making you prove it? So.
All right, sounds good. Um, Audrey, go ahead, please.
Yeah, I have a basic question here. It might look like really dumb. I have eight bicycles at home, but. I wanted to understand. So there is right now. Walmarts don't have to have a license to sell bicycle, but other stores are. Is that what we have right now and we are trying to repeal that requirement?
Go ahead, Alder Foster.
Uh, yeah, I think we can wait maybe for that question until the next item's up in front of us, since this, the the one that was in front of us right now is really around the um. It it has several requirements in um including having proof of ownership um for. For sale. Um, this one's not actually related to the bicycle dealer license, which is the next.
Yeah, sorry, I get got confused between.
Well, it's okay. I mentioned it as well. My fault, dude.
All right, any further questions or discussion? Seeing none, um, is there a motion? Alder Foster?
I would uh move approval.
There's a motion. Is there a second? Second, Alder Furman. Thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing none on the motion to. Uh, repeal M G O twelve point seventy two, which which regulates the sale and rental of bicycles. All those in favor of recommending repeal, please unmute yourselves and say aye.
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 Opposed, no? Chair believes it's unanimous. If you'd like to register a no vote, please raise your hand. Seeing no hands raised, uh, that will go down as unanimous. Thank you. Um. Our next item is Legistar seven five eight four six. Repeal and reorganize penalty provisions regarding bicycles and off-road motor vehicles. And then uh without objection, we'll combine that with seven five eight four seven repealing M G O twelve point seven eight one, which licenses bicycle dealers. Alder Foster, did you want to speak to those?
Uh, yeah, just to um speak to to Audrey's question. So yes, this is one, this is one where the. Uh, that technically um it says no person, firm, or association or corporation um. Shall have a business for the purchase or sale or transfer of new or used bicycle or bicycle parts without a license. Again, that license was originally required as part of the ordinance that required bicycle um licenses. And so this, this was an a way. To enforce the ordinance that required bicycle dealers to um provide bike licenses to customers. That was um, that ordinance was repealed, uh, I think with maybe even over two years ago. Um, and but this requirement for the licensure of the dealer themselves was left on the books. And so I. I mentioned that today, it's not something that's proactively um enforced in any way. And um that um particularly for um those kind of big box retail stores, I'm um, I I know that they are, they have not been. Um, um, applying for and getting a license. Um, but the standalone bicycle shops, some of them um have a different years. Found this requirement and have have made the payment, even though um really it's not doing anything for us um at this point. So repeal this would simply sort of do away with a requirement. It doesn't really get us anything um these days and um would would take away a small barrier that's in front of um small bike shops today.
Thank you, Alder Foster. Um. We did have, um, just kind of catching up here. Sorry, we did have two registrations for the previous item. Both were in support, not wishing to speak. Just for the record, it was Janet Murphy. One seventy, one seven, sorry, seven one one South Orchard Street, Madison. And Mary uh. Kuzicowski um in support, also not wishing to speak, forty five oh two Woods End, Madison. And then for the first of these two. Um, in support, not wishing to speak is Janet Murphy, uh, seven eleven South Orchard Street, Madison. I need to get that on there. And then I think um Alder Henry McKinney, your first.
Okay, thank you, um, Chair. Um. Am I to understand is that you are just consistently cleaning up um. Uh, pieces of an ordinance that's that's already been um um repealed? So you're just making sure that all portions of that ordinance, what was left over, that you're cleaning it up? Is that what the purpose of this is?
Go ahead, Alder Foster.
Uh, yes, Alder Henry McKinney, that's effectively right. Um, without the cleanup, there still is technically a requirement for this licensure. But the licensure is really not connected to the duties that it used to be connected to. So there's sort of no, no good reason to require the license for dealers anymore, but it's still a technical requirement on the on the book. So. Yes, it's essentially cleaning up and deleting the second half of an ordinance that was already deleted.
Thank you.
All right, um, any further questions or discussion? Or we are taking these up jointly. Is there a motion? Alder Foster?
Uh, move a recommendation for approval of uh both items eight and nine.
Thank you. Is there a second? Looks like Alder Paulson potentially second. All right, thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing none on the motion to approve items eight and nine, that is repeal and reorganize penalty provisions regarding bicycles and off-road motor vehicles and repealing M G O twelve point seven eight one, which licenses bikes, bicycle dealers. All those in favor of um recommending repealing and uh repeal, please unmute yourselves and say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Opposed, no? Chair believes unanimous. If you'd like to register a no vote, please raise your hand. Seeing no hands raised, that will go down as unanimous. Thank you. Um, our next item then is Legistar seven six two one four. Substitute authorizing the city to execute a competitive service contract with A E Com Technical Services. Inc. for project development and other engineering services associated with the North-South Bus Rapid Transit.
Yeah, I could just give a a brief um discussion of this. Um. We uh sent out an R F Q request for qualifications for the North-South Line. Probably uh six to eight weeks ago, we received one proposal. Uh, the one proposal is from A E Com. Uh, they have a collection of subconsultants, probably about eight subconsultants. Uh, they were the consultant that did our uh east-west. Uh, Bus Rapid Transit. And actually, um, we feel pretty happy with them because they were quite responsive. They um. Um, they had to do a an awful lot of work very quickly and they they did. Um. And so, um. We're just asking for uh uh support on this. We will probably uh negotiate. The contract with A E Com and uh stages through different purchase orders um kind of uh. Doing project development first, uh small starts application and then environmental document and and to those effects. I'm available to answer any questions?
Um, questions or discussion, Alder Henry McKinney? Go ahead, please.
Uh, thank you, Chair. Um. Uh, Tom, would you let me, um, would you clarify that um, once this is approved? Uh, eat the subcontracts, you'll just automatically negotiate those and you will be making those decisions? Or will they come back? Once we approve this contract completely? Um, uh, you you and your staff will be responsible for negotiating those subcontracts. It won't come back before us. Is that correct?
Uh, no, it's it's not correct. They listed a a series of subconsultants that they will be using. Okay, and and they need to commit to using those subconsultants. However, some purchase orders may have um. One some, the use of more than. More of one subconsultant and less of another. Uh, an example, for instance, the environmental document, they uh they have. On their team, uh, S R F consulting to do the environmental document. So for that purchase order, um, S R F will get a largest. Uh, share and other consultants might get a smaller share, right? Um, they have committed to, uh, we did have a D B E percentage and they had to provide a strategy for meeting our D B E. Uh, um, percentage or disadvantaged business enterprise over the life of the project. Uh, they do have. Um, several D B E subconsultants, uh, some like for s- sound acoustics. Uh, a design engineering firm out of Milwaukee and the like. So they uh they have. Probably three or four. Um, D B E subconsultants that that they can use to meet their commitments to meeting our 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 goal. Over the course of the project.
Okay, and just my final follow-up question is, is that um um having the consultant, the these, these are. Um, efficiencies that our staff cannot provide. Is that why you're passing those off to uh the consultant to? To handle under this non-compete contract?
Uh, yeah, actually, it was, uh, it was a competitively. Based contract. And so the while we only got one submittal, uh, it was out there for others and other um. Um, consultants, we met with numerous other consultants about this. And so it was open for other people to compete. Uh, it was a, it's a pretty substantial uh submittal. And so uh those other consulting firms in the end just chose not to submit. Um. As far as as a workload, yes, I I I'm gonna say that probably in the peak of design. Um, the project team probably had forty full-time people preparing plans and specifications in order to meet our timeline. Uh, you know, we just don't have that type of capacity in-house and. They, in many ways, they went from thirty thirty percent to ninety percent in in a matter of. You know, three, four months. It was uh quite quick. They had to. Um, devote a lot of resources that we just would not be able to do in-house.
Okay. Thank you, Chair. I'm complete.
Right. Any further questions or discussion? Is there a motion? Alder Paulson?
Uh, move approval.
Thank you. Second, Alder Henry McKinney.
Second.
All right, thank you. Any further discussion? What pulse in your hands? So did you want to speak to your motion? Okay, all right, on the motion to recommend um. Authorizing the city to execute a competitive service contract with A E Com Technical Services Inc. for project development and other engineering services associated with North-South Bus Rapid Transit. All those in favor, please unmute yourselves and say aye.
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 Opposed, no? Chair believes unanimous. If you'd like to register a no vote, please raise your hand. Seeing no hands raised, that will go down as unanimous. Thank you. Uh, last item for the evening then is Legistar seven six three nine eight, authorizing the negotiation and execution of a contract with N H T B for continued passenger rail studies services.
And so we did a a request for proposals for passenger rail services. Uh, last year, we selected H N T B uh for a a pretty modest contract amount, a hundred and twenty thousand dollars. But within the R F P, we stated that if additional funding became available, we would continue to contract with them. Um, and so this with the twenty twenty-three capital budget. Um, three hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And so this, with the twenty twenty-three capital budget, um, three hundred and fifty thousand dollars was authorized for this. We will um get approval to contract with them for up to that amount. However, we will probably be using a purchase orders uh sys- system, in that we ask them to do kind of the next phase of the passenger rail. Uh, we have been looking at, at certain sites for the passenger rail study. Uh, we need to actually investigate and refine a couple more of them. So one of the first purchase orders will be to probably do a, a little bit more um, design services as in determining some of the, the, the location feasibilities.
Thank you, Tom. Any questions? Discussion? Seeing none, is there a motion? Chris?
Uh, move approval.
Thank you. Second, Padraig, thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing none. Um, on the motion to recommend authorizing the negotiation and execution of a contract with any HNTB for continued passenger rail study services. All those in favor, please unmute yourselves and say aye.
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 Opposed, no? Chair believes it's unanimous, if you'd like to register a no vote, please raise your hand. Seeing no hands raised, that will go down as unanimous. Thank you. That's all we have for the evening. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Would you permit?
Uh, moved second, it looked like, looks like by Harry McKinney. Uh, any discussion? Seeing none. All right, all is in favor, please say aye.
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 It was unanimous, we're adjourned. Have a good night, everyone.
Night.